Good evening, welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, May the 6th, 2019. This evening we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Cub Scout PAC 85. Gentlemen?
Clerk, attention. The audience please rise. Clerk, forward march. Clerk, halt. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, dismissed.
Thank you, great job. The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Eldridge?
Here.
Trustee Bromberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Greg Healer is absent today. Mayor Vandusen?
Here. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion is in order. Trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Sutker. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, I'll call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen?
Aye. The motion passes. Gives me great pleasure this evening to introduce the chairman of the Skokie Technology and Communications Commission, Sam Corsione. For an award and an honor on both a young man and on the village of Skokie. Sam?
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Ladies and gentlemen, the Skokie Telecommunications and Technology, or STAT, Commission is very excited to present the Second Annual Skokie Science Fair Award to a dedicated Skokie student who exemplifies scientific excellence and developed a project which we believe could best help improve the quality of life in the village of Skokie. On March 9th, my fellow commissioners and I attended the Niles North Science Fair. The Commission reviewed many great projects at this event and chose Hassan Udin as the individual whose project stood out above the rest. On behalf of the STAT Commission, it is my pleasure to introduce Hassan Udin. Hassan and Mayor Vandusen, would you like to come up?
I might point out Hassan is a sophomore at Niles North and I will ask him to give us the title of his project. This year, it actually is in English and, not that we'll understand it, but at least it's in English this year, so. Hassan?
So, my project is predicting pneumonia using machine learning.
Tell us something about, don't be shy.
So, machine learning is this idea of teaching computers by giving them a lot of information and not touching any of it, how to make predictions and how to make guesses. So what I did was I gave computers a lot of information about pneumonia and images of chest x-rays and the computers were able to recognize if you gave them a picture whether or not the person had pneumonia.
It's pretty amazing.
Ironically, a week later, I wound up in bed with pneumonia.
Well, my wife has had pneumonia four times in the last year and a half. We need your expertise. They still haven't figured out exactly what it is, but it's amazing and it's very inspiring to be at this science fair. The entire gymnasium was taken up with contestants, their parents, plus their cheering crowd. And Niles North and Niles West did exceptionally well, won several awards, and chief among them was Hassan's. So it's very, it really is very impressive when a young man, only a sophomore, has this kind of scientific knowledge already. What he and some of these other young people are taking in science in their freshman, sophomore year is what most of us, of my older generation, were taking in college. And that's how advanced they are. It's really impressive and I want to congratulate you and you make us very proud. The problem, problem with winning it as a sophomore is now the pressure is on to repeat next year. So, but congratulations. I'd like to shake your hand. Would you introduce your, your parents?
Yeah, please.
Salim Adin, Salim Salim, and my sister, Amazah Salim.
And Sam, would you introduce your fellow commissioner?
I will. From the STAT Commission here tonight are Randall Clayton, Jimmy Gonzalez, Ken Grossman, Avi Nutkus, Fran Rain, Scott Schamberg, and Ninos Yohanna. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there you go. This is yours.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You must be very proud.
Can I take one?
Sure, of course. This is the Technology Commission. Sam, oh! I'm gonna make a politician out of Sam.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you very again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, please join me in congratulating Hassan for earning the 2019 Skokie Technology and Telecommunication Award. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Bruce Ratner, who is with us this evening. Bruce has been approved this evening on the consent agenda as the newest member of the Board and Fire Police Commissioners, so, thank you. And Will Evans, the chairman of the Commission, is with us this evening. Lot of applauding tonight. All good, all good, much to applaud. Bruce, you're joining a commission that happens to work with two of the greatest first responder forces in the country, our Police and Fire Commission. You probably have been told this, but I love telling people, our, both of our departments have been fully accredited and so far as I'm aware, we are still only one of three or four municipalities in the country that has a Police, Fire, and Public Works Department all accredited. And it's due in very large part because of the methodical way that our Board of Fire and Police Commissioners go about their work. They ensure that we have the best in the country and we're very proud of both the Police and Fire Department and the work of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. I don't know how many are aware, but Bruce has extensive experience in law enforcement and we're very fortunate to have you, so, thank you for volunteering and Will will be putting you to work real soon, I promise you, so. I figured as much. You're welcome, thank you. Next item on the agenda is report of our village manager, John Lockery.
Thank you, Mayor Vandusen and Board of Trustees. Item A is regarding an upgrade in traffic control from yield sign to two-way stop sign control at Greenleaf Street and Trumbull Avenue, Greenleaf Street and Monticello Avenue, as well as Jerome Street and Leclerc Avenue intersections. In order to assess safety, traffic controls were reviewed by engineering staff at the intersection, of these intersections. These intersections are in a residential area and controlled with yield signs. After review of crash history, it was determined that an upgrade to two-way stop sign controls will enhance safety and add to traffic calming in the area. I concur with the Traffic Engineering Division and respectfully request Mayor and Board approval to authorize Corporation Council to draft the enabling ordinance.
A motion on the manager's recommendation would be in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Bromberg. Are there any comments or questions? At the microphone is Eric Cook, our traffic engineer. No questions. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen?
Aye. The motion passes.
Item B is regarding the establishment of a 25 mile per hour speed limit from Laverne Avenue, from, on Laverne Avenue, from Golf Road to Church Street. After receiving inquiries and concerns regarding Laverne Avenue from Golf Road to Church Street, the area was investigated and a traffic study was conducted. This one-way street is currently under a 30 mile per hour speed limit. It is an active bike route and parking is allowed on both sides of the street. Previous traffic calming measures have been implemented, however, the engineering staff recommends a reduction in speed to 25 miles an hour to further enhance the safety of this stretch of Laverne. This situation is similar to other collector streets throughout the village. In those instances, the speed limit has been lowered to 25 miles per hour with favorable results. I concur with the Traffic Engineering Division and respectfully request Mayor and Board approval to authorize the Corporation Council to draft the enabling ordinance.
A motion on item B of the agenda, per the recommendation of the village manager, is in order. Trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee O'Wright. Are there any comments or questions on item B? Trustee Roberts?
So, Eric, in terms of, when I looked at the actual monitoring of speeds, this was more of a perception of speeding as opposed to, the speeds weren't that excessive.
They weren't excessive, we're sort of, with our collector streets where we have a greater distance without any kind of speed or stop control in between, we've been doing these, most recently Central Park and Laramie. It's the best way to do it. The intersections don't meet requirements, meet the warrants for a stop sign, so this is a good way to do it.
Yeah. And it's, has it been pretty good? I mean, now we have on several of the main street where there's bikeways and, does it seem like it helps the?
The bikers appreciate it, yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen?
Aye. The motion passes.
Items C, D, and E were approved as part of tonight's consent agenda. Item F is regarding a request for executive session pursuant to paragraph two, excuse me, pursuant to section two, paragraph C5 and C6 of the State of Illinois Open Meetings Act, a closed session is requested and to adjourn therefrom.
A motion on an executive, executive session request by the village manager is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee O'Wright. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen?
Aye. Motion passes.
That completes my report this evening.
Thank you. Next item is report of our Corporation Council, Michael Lorch.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. I'm joined tonight by members of the Corporation Council office. Items A and B are ordinances which were on the consent agenda at the beginning of this evening's meeting and were adopted at that time. Item C is an ordinance which is up for first reading tonight. This ordinance will amend Chapter 2, Article 7 of the Skokie Village Code, which provides for the establishment of village boards and commissions. As we know, these commissions are an integral and valued part of village government and provide participatory access to our governmental process by our residents in the village. It's seen as a way to engage our residents in good government. In particular, the effort in this revision of this part of the code was to consolidate the code in a sort of housekeeping manner to make it easier for people to read and to access. We moved all of the sections that applied generally to all commissions to the front of this part of the code. The substantive changes within it is the change of the number of members to the Consumer Affairs Commission from 13 to 15, the number of members of the Commission on Family Services to 24, the number of members on the Public Arts Advisory Committee from 5 to 7. It provides for a stipulation limiting members of the village, of the village in general, to serve as appointed liaisons rather than members of any commissions. It also applies a new title to the Cable Television Advisory Committee, as we heard this evening, now the Telecommunications and Technology Commission, and it increases its members from 7 to 10. Finally, it clarifies issues of quorum for each of our boards and commissions and puts it in a more uniform statement. These are the substantive changes, the rest, as I said, is largely housekeeping. Mayor, this ordinance will be back on May 20th for second reading and adoption at that time.
Thank you. I might add that this is the work product of close to a year. Michael, my assistant, Vicky Varga and I, and then the Corporation Council staff have been working on this and at one point or another, Michael or I have been in touch with the chairs of all of the commissions to get their input. Some of the commissions are by state statute, but others are of our own individual creation. So it's taken a great deal of effort, but I want to thank Michael, Vicky, and the, and the entire Corporation Council staff. It's been quite an effort. Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Sutker?
So for the Commission on Family Service, number of 24, is that, is that by us or is that a state?
That's, that's our own.
Our own. So which ones are the state?
The state would be the Police-Fire Board, the Pension Board for Police-Fire, and then the other one that we really didn't want to step into in any substantive changes were planning, zoning, because those had been so carefully worked out with Pete Pyer and the manager's office a few years ago. So those we left untouched.
Okay. Thank you.
And the state statute doesn't create the zoning board and planning commission, but they refer to that kind of function, so it's quasi-state encouraged, let's say.
Encouraged, yeah.
Yes.
Or recommended.
Recommended.
Yeah. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, that would conclude my report for this evening.
And the next item is Plan Commission, Plan Commission Case 2019-08P. Chairman Paul Luke with Peter Pyer.
Good evening, Mayor members of the board. At the April 4th meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed language to possibly modify the zoning chapter of the village code with the purpose of clarifying the requirements for parking determinations. Based on Plan Commission Case 2018-46P, and as a result of a requested review by the Corporation Council, this chapter amendment is intended to address the concerns of some commissioners about the clarity of parking determination, submittal, and review requirements. The amendment gives the Plan Commission guidance on making such determinations and references items on the petition of parking determination for some of the submittal requirements for specific use. The Commission also agreed with staff that all assembly uses should have parking determinations based on the large variation in types of use of this category. Plan Commission recommends by a vote of five ayes and no nays, four members absent, that this chapter be adopted.
A motion on Plan Commission Case 2019-08P, zoning chapter amendment, parking determinations is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Sutker. Are there any comments or questions? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Vandusen?
Aye. The motion passes.
That concludes our report.
Thank you. The concluding item this evening is citizen comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board? If you take the microphone and give us your name and address, please. If you come to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate the time. My name is Debbie Lampert and I reside in Skokie on Keating Avenue. I've resided here for over 50 years and I have a number of concerns following especially, following this atrocious weekend with the attacks over in Israel by the Muslim terrorists, as I understand it. And living in a sanctuary city, which I still cannot fathom, but it is what it is, I'm concerned about the safety of the citizens here in Skokie, Illinois. I have two children who attended parochial school at St. Peter's and it is now closed. You know, going to the house of worship, synagogues, I have numerous Jewish friends of mine, family, extended, you know, members of the community, et cetera. And I'm just concerned about what is being done to keep everybody safe and sound and if you have some sort of, and you must have some sort of plan in case of some type of catastrophe that might occur, God forbid that it does, but in, in the, being proactive rather than reactive, what the board is doing about keeping the citizens in the sanctuary city of Skokie now, safe and sound.
Well, yeah, I mean, the answer to your question is that is something that is on the minds of every single member of this board, every single day.
Absolutely.
You cannot, it's something that is unavoidable and something frankly, we cannot and should not avoid. We put significant resources into our first responders, Police and Fire. We just completed our budget deliberations for this year and both of those departments are headed by the best in the profession and we have the best Police and Fire Departments possible. But we also need citizens to be conscious of their surroundings and know what it is they're doing, where they're going. We live in an open society. We, we are fortunate in one sense to have two open-air shopping centers, just as an example, that happen to be doing reasonably well, given the state of shopping centers across the country. But there is not a day that doesn't go by and we say to ourselves, thank God that something here has not happened.
Right.
We work with all of the religious institutions in the village. Our police chief is familiar to all of them. This last Friday, our Corporation Council attended a news conference at which we supported legislation in the General Assembly to secure upwards of $30 million for religious institutions to provide for enhanced protection. That is not 30 million for the village of Skokie, it's 30 million that would be spread for religious institutions across the state. But we also do on a regular basis, what they call tabletop exercises with Cook County. Our police chief, our fire chief are also in touch with the US Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Bureau of Investigation. This is the kind of hard work that is done behind the scenes every day. And the simple answer to your question is yes, we do have a plan and you will see, once every so often, members of the police force and the fire department, public works department, health department, doing exercises in the village. And that is so that we can be prepared, God forbid. I might point out that we also have, as the head of our health department, a nationally recognized expert in communicable diseases. She came to us as one of the chief doctors at Stroger Hospital with Cook County. When we had the H1N1 scare a couple of years ago, she was probably the second person in the state of Illinois contacted by the Centers for Disease Control, recognizing her expertise. And she put together a series of clinics in which, within six weeks, our health staff with volunteers from the village gave between 40,000 and 50,000 vaccinations. That's just an example of the kinds of work that we do. Hopefully, we won't have to execute the plans.
Well, for instance, in New York, they're, they're making it mandatory that you be vaccinated because now smallpox has come back supposedly. All of these immigrants and such that are coming in and are not vaccinated are bringing all of these diseases to the United States of America that we have not seen in decades and they are now forcing and making it mandatory in New York City that you be vaccinated, otherwise you will be quarantined. And I'm just, you know, that's.
Our, Dr. Canard tells us that our vaccination rates are in the neighborhood of 98, 99% in the village of Skokie and.
That's phenomenal.
We, in conjunction with the schools, monitor that kind of thing.
I believe. I believe that that is a necessity. In order to go to school, you have to have your doctor, you know, prove your vaccinations are up to date.
Well, and since around the subject, I will also point out that in the state of Illinois, there are only seven, seven municipalities that have a health department that's board-certified. Evanston and Skokie are the only two in this region that still have health departments. And we're very proud of all of our responders, police, fire, health department, public works, the manager's office as well.
As you should be, very much so. And I noticed also since coming back to Skokie after about a ten-year, being, being away from here for about that long, that downtown Skokie, once it becomes dark, is pretty much desolate. And I'm just wondering what you're doing to bring back businesses, restaurants, things like that to the area. Everything seems to be shut down. There's not any big grocery stores anymore, any Jules, any Dominix, anything like that, you know, Mariano's, or you've got, you know, little, little mom-and-pop places. Places I go into now these days, I can't even read the labels because they're not in English. They're in some, some other sort of language that I've, maybe Arabic would be my guess. You know, I've, I've seen Hebrew language, and it's not Hebrew. So my guess is that it would be some sort of Muslim-type, type of brands, and they don't speak English, and they're not very, very kind to you. And while I'm on that subject, and I'm sorry to end, not end your meeting in discord by any means, but to bring up that I'm having problems with my Muslim neighbors because I had the American flag hung out over a weekend for Veterans Day, and had to call the police and get them involved because they, they were offended by the American flag. And I'm just hoping and praying that that is not how my village, as I look at it, my town, my hometown, does not disrespect the American flag as, as these, as my neighbors seem to think that, that I was trying, or my family was trying to do when we were paying.
Ms. Lampert, I've been mayor for twenty years. I've been on the village board since nineteen eighty-four.
I know you have.
You're the very first person I've ever met in this village who has said that there's somebody who doesn't respect the American flag.
Well, that's a first for everything.
And I've met a lot of people in this village. I don't know anybody who doesn't respect the American flag. We have a Muslim population in the village, and these are very good, law-abiding, good citizens.
I have no doubt.
I have some, I have some friends who are Muslim, who go to the MCC Academy. Just last week, we had a ceremony there where we did a, we did a tree planting for Arbor Day, and you could not meet nicer young students, grammar school. The principal of that school is one of the nicest men I've ever met in my life. I go, I've been there many times. I've been across this village. We have one hundred places in this village represented from across the world.
Right.
We have little or no problems racially, ethnically. We proudly recognize that we welcome people, and we consider it a strength in this country and in this village. I don't know what the problem was with your neighbor, but you're the first person I have met who's had a problem like that.
Yes. Well, I, I did have to contact the police, and I mean, it was short-lived. I talked to this, you know, their son the next day, and kind of tried to ease things over and explain the situation. I don't know if they were having a bad day, and I'm not, I'm not here to bring up, you know, racial, you know, monotony amongst each other because we are all humans, we are all, you know, have our own beliefs, have our own, our own visions of what the world should be. But I just wanted to bring up, you know, that I had concerns that, that it was becoming a little too, a little too racist on, on that part, on their part, not on my, not on the Christian and the Jews parts, but on the Muslim part. That was my major concern. And what you have just.
Well, I can allay those fears.
Right. And I'm glad that you did, because I feel much better about it. And, but I did, you know, I felt that it was my, my duty as a mother of two to bring it to the village's attention, and to see what you had to say, and make sure that I felt that it was safe, and that it was sound, and that it was, it was going, it was taken care of. And if there was a problem, that there was a plan in the works, or there was, you know, that you had the form of thought to think ahead just in case, you know, in those type of scenarios. And I'm sorry that my case, you know, what I said about the police and my neighbor is the first time that you've ever heard of that. Maybe it's just the first time somebody had, had the, the audacity or the, the, the heart to, to broach the subject, because it is so, you know, unpalpable to so many people across the world, you know, especially here in the United States now as we stand.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have anything in addition?
Um, no.
We need to go, we have an executive session we need to adjourn.
Yes, I understand that. I just also wanted to ask real quickly, the, the taxes have, have risen dramatically.
Property taxes.
Property taxes.
Yes.
Have, have, do you plan on those going any higher? I mean.
We, our prop, the village portion of the property tax bill has not gone up since nineteen ninety. Our levy is fifteen point four million dollars every year, the village portion.
Because I know, I know numerous people.
It is not the village portion of the property tax.
Okay.
That's going up.
Okay. I mean, people can't afford to pay ten thousand dollars in, in property taxes.
Yes.
That's outrageous.
Yes. And my understanding is that part of the governor's revenue proposal is in exchange of a property tax freeze in exchange for revenue enhancement at the state level. I have not.
What type of enhancement would you get in, in return for?
Increase of the state income tax.
Okay.
I have not read the proposal. I've read summaries of it, but.
That would be.
The legislature is aware of it. We're very much aware of it. It isn't unique to Skokie. Every community is facing the problem of how do we fund our schools? If you want to keep the schools in the modern age where we're competitive in technology, you saw the young man this evening.
Very impressive.
He's only, he's a great, great young man, very nice young man.
He's going places, that's for sure.
But I might point out, he's one of many. We have forty-eight hundred young people in our high schools. Niles West High School just won the National Robotics Award.
That's amazing.
Niles North won the State Robotics Awards. I can go on and on about these young people. They're very impressive. They've got great manners. They work hard. Question is, we, we need to keep providing them with the education. Seventy percent of the property taxes in Skokie, Morton Grove, Niles, and Lincolnwood all are devoted to, from, from the property taxes to the schools.
Well, the property taxes keep going, you know, I could say keep going up because that's what I have seen.
Yes.
And witnessed, and I, every time that bill comes around.
What we.
But the, the property values have definitely decreased.
No, no.
The housings here have gone down.
You, you better go talk to some realtors.
Well, I know in the.
It's the opposite right now. The property values are going up. Right now, our property values, according to a couple of realtors I was talking with over the weekend, just as it happens, because they live in my neighborhood, our property values are now in excess of what they were before the Great Recession. We took a dramatic hit during the recession.
Right.
And I mean dramatic. We've now returned. As I was, I live on the north side of the village on Tripp, just south of Gulf Road.
Oh, okay.
I was literally walking down the block with, with a couple of realtors, and they were pointing out to me how houses in the neighborhood have gone up dramatically. It's a seller's market right now.
It is. I've seen a lot of places that have been for sale for a very long time, and they, they can't seem to unload them in the area of Skokie Boulevard and Oakton and that area.
And also.
We have a two-flat.
Well, I'm not going to get.
We own a two-flat, Mr. Mayor, and it used to be worth almost five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Right now, you, you couldn't give it away for maybe two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's how bad the area is where I live. Now, where my parents lived on Springfield and Maine, their property, their single-family home, sold for four hundred fifty thousand dollars. But the taxes on that were twelve thousand dollars a year as well, and they, they obviously retired to Florida and, and are now ceased. But that, that was two years ago where the taxes were twelve thousand dollars on a single-family home worth four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I'm just, I'm just saying.
We're, 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 we really need to get to an executive session.
Right. I understand that. So I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
I feel much better, and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.